I am Paulis, I'm going to follow the regular sessions for the first week of September in the order. Please rise for the innovation today by Councilor, Councilor Colonel Gimbala and Mr. Mr. Phil D'Antoni.
Mga kababayan, ang pampansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Supersiding officer, Vice Mayor Jose Antonio De Gervais. Supersiding officer, Count Antonio De Baca. The minority floor leader, Councilor Ciro Villanado. The minority floor leader, Councilor Oscar A. Gudin. Councilor Carlos Elizondo. Councilor Michelle Escondera. Councilor Ophelia Portelera. Councilor Verna S. De Ramallo. Councilor Kobe De Ranoi. Councilor Daya M. De Leon. Councilor Alfredo E. Ciri Castro. Dika Nama Barak, President of Uldi Bakay. And Paldosan Republic President, Tabacan President, Labor League B. Belnabe. Two members of the Congress.
Two members respond to the call, I now certify that we are correct in our official business.
Approval of agenda.
Majority floor leader. Can we sign this, let me check it out. This will move by Councilor Ciro Villanado, Majority floor leader, seconded by Councilor Oscar Pauling and Councilor De Nina Ratago for the approval of the said agenda. Any objection? Abandon that discussion, the said agenda is approved.
Adoption of the journals and minutes of the regular sessions held on August 20, 2019 and August 27, 2019.
Any motion? Councilor Segundera.
Supersiding officer, I need for the adoption of the journal and minutes of the SP regular sessions held on August 20, 2019 and August 27, 2019.
This will move by Councilor Segundera, due to seconded by Councilor Carlos Elizondo and Councilor Talia De León for the adoption of the journals and minutes of the SP regular sessions held on August 20 and August 27, 2019. Are there any objections? Abandon that discussions. Getting off of the said journals and minutes are approved, adopted, sorry. Any privilege question, privilege hour, privilege speeches? Next item, Majority floor leader.
Under request of business, we have a proposed resolution. Resolution approving a detailed partial list of projects funded under the following funds. 20% Development Fund and Infrastructure Development Program, 528,755 pesos. And the Roads Building Development Project for various barangays. We have 2,175,021 pesos and 61,000 pesos. Under Special Purpose Appropriation, amounting to 115,100 pesos, assistance to barangays and schools. The other item is the distribution of the writing city vice mayors, Antonio De Gervais, to execute a medium donation for food, equipment, furniture, and features procured from the Deserribs Department funds in video of the recipient's barangays association for schools of the Alavino City Schools Division.
Any motion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Latago.
I hope that the... ... person to... ... last two items.
This will move by Councilor Ciro Villanado, seconded by Councilor Elizondo for the suspension of the rules to override the order. Majority floor leader, can we acknowledge our...
For item number one, we have Sir Lloyd P. Sandro, Architect 2, from our City Engineer Office. Sir Louis Inveret, and Montilla Pira Roque, from our City Budget Office, and also Miss Jackie Lee Ciri Leon, also from CEO.
I'm sorry, there, Sir... Officer.
I present ko lang po 'yung partial list of the project funded for the... ... the year 2019, so 20% Development Fund, so... Uh, nagpresent po kami ng video presentation para mas magdi-display ng... ... ng... ... ng... ... ng... ... ng... So, 'yung San President Structure Development, po po 'yung college facilities na itatayo po natin sa barangay sa Baca. So, ito 'yung gagamit po natin mga asamong mga farmers. So, ang amount po, 528,755. Uh, next po, para dun sa development projects for various barangays. Uh, po po 'yung samang group 'yung effect, 20 IC, natin 'yung... Uh, repair and rehabilitation of ang group propagation formation center. Uh, amounting 162,496. Uh, next po is 'yung sa National Child Development Center, po natin na... ... multi-corehouse building, wherein edicator po natin 'yung parang playground po natin na sharing na po siya. So, I believe it will, uh... ... ma-profit na 'yung mga anak natin at the same time din, uh... ... talagang, uh... ... shaded na rin po siya. So, ang di lang pumasama dun 'yung, uh... ... playground po siya, kasi... ... alake sa 'yung panahala. Thank you. Uh, any question?
Any questions for the party? Councilor Elizondo.
You can regard to sa... ... school facilities, that's for me guys.
Six five four. Sa manggroup propagation naman po, um... ... malapit po siya. Sa... 200 square meter po, 'yung manggroup. Kasi two, two floors po siya. So, ang gagawin naman po natin, maki-post na. Uh, i-inclus natin kasi, kung minsan pagkabi, may mga pumapasok pa rin dun, uh... So, naka-inclus na po siya ngayon, kasi inclus na po natin 'yung kasi...
Dun sa pasakyan ko, pag... ... mga permo-skillings, uh... Paano sa pasakyan natin siya sa...
Hindi pang, pa-pwede po 'yung ibang mga barangays na po siya. Kasi in-CDC po po, 'yung mga, uh... 3 to 5 at 4 kilo na mga barangay, po, 'yung edicator po. Additional na, sa CDC na kailangan po, may re-reward po sa akin, po natin.
Any other questions for Councilor Latago?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the... ... students, facilities sa Baca. Ano-ano mga pwede is doko dun?
Usually po 'yung, uh... ... mga upgrade facilities po natin, 'yung mga... ... mga buto ba siya? Mga buto, mga bagang po siya, mga... ... mga seats lang po siya.
Hindi pwede talay?
Malit po siya para sa bagay.
Po... ... mga seat.
Oo, tapos 'yung mga ginagamit po natin ng mga apartment.
Any other questions? Majority floor President Latago.
Sir, uh... Itanong po lang 'yung building ng, uh... ... sa Baca.
Yes, sir.
Sa barangay... ... Tapa. Ano iba pa tayo? Ano 'yung question na... ... um... Okay, hindi ko po alam. Po po di, opa siya? Sa ang... ... ang bukid yata.
Pang... ... best... ... na... ... bukid na, pati siya na bukid, with regards to the... ... i-balikan po, nalang po kayo. Naulit nalang po.
Majority floor leader. Councilor Talia De León.
'Yung building na 'yan, 'yung sa taas ba niya, ano 'yan, bangbu... 'Yung design? O complete lang ba?
Uh, sa walli nang po, uh... Light materials nang po 'yung ginamit namin. 'Yun naman po, okay, maganda po, nakawit po 'yung mga buto para may tanging po nila.
Sir?
So, kung bangbu po 'yan, hindi po ba, mas maganda nalang kung complete, kasi... Baka madali lang din ma-masira 'yan, pag may mga malalakas na tycom.
Na-nag-aanong course naman po 'yan, hindi naman po batuhan, kasi siguro mga... Atong tong buto eh, kasi complete naman po 'yung expense natin. Pati 'yung roof naman natin, will... ... na-structure naman po, 'yung... Palit lang po niya 'yung pa... Pa-sa-walli, sa walli po.
Sir, in addition to that, uh... Pati, may alam mo ba 'yung background, kung barangay na nagbabasga ng one unit college, basility, talaga, lahat po ng barangay na alam niya?
'Yun po 'yung target po ng... ... mi-mang archery.
Buto, answers po rin.
Opo, pati 'yung mga, ibang mga facilities ng...
I can't like...
I agree, barangay po natin, may mga tao po tayo na ang buit po, so, at least 'yung gamit nila ng pinagula.
Parang sakreto?
Ah, sakreto.
Uh, I think, wala naman pong concern dun, or of, sure, five hundred thousand per barangay, so, the 39 barangays, that would be... 19, or less 20 million, just for that six five four, ano, napaka, 'yung maintenance niya, 19,000 every year, so, nag-aralan ng ano, po san nanggaling 'yung ganong area?
Binanggrid lang din po, from national po 'yung area, so, parang may system po silang ginagawa na... Uh, kinailangan 'yung help ng CEO Office from the City Attorney.
It away first, sa Baca. I don't know.
Sa barangay po po, 'yan talaga.
Uh, nagawa ba?
Hindi ba?
Any other questions regarding the...
'Yung halawa, ilang po siguro?
Regarding the... ... Majority floor.
Magka, uh... Miniri na, sa walli nalang, na meeting, muli, magka, nalang complete, para mas... Para sa... ... halina, mas... Pure, mas... Matagal.
Sa, sa barangay ko po, for the corpus ng, 'yung sa temperature po natin, uh... Hindi maninig po.
Magkaano ba, nadami ang niistong nating seats sa Alavino?
Napalagay ko po ang ating, uh, City Agriculture po, 'yung mga matagot po niya. Kasi 'yung place po 'yung, pinupay nila na area ng, kailangan po nila, tapos sa walli po, uh, based dun sa requirements na binigay nila, uh, ginawa talang po namin na completo para mas matibay, pati 'yung sa room pit po. Uh... Uh, ginawa namin na, structure rebuild, at ma-makatagal siya sa bagay.
Siya ng... ... model. May ruma tayong seats, bibigyan natin sa apartment, kasi hindi pa natin idiretso sa apartment, kailangan pa natin isto niya.
Hindi lang nang po seats 'yung nilalagay po natin dun, may mga iba bang facilities na 'yung mga equipment din po na nilalagay po dun sa storage facility po natin.
Kasi po 'yung seats, hindi mo idiretso sa apartment, may equipment, hindi mo siguro kailangan pirito dun? Kailangan pirito dun, mga...
'Yun po nga dun 'yung re-reward po sa akin ng City Agriculture, so, I guess, I suggest na channel ang bit po 'yung, eh, sa ano naman, with regards dun sa parameters na, uh, re-reward po sa...
Majority floor, can you phone the Attorney General Office, for Attorney General, any other questions? Majority, Majority Director, say something.
Nung, uh, binigay sa mayang... ... model, or...
Sorry, facilities, sir.
Yes, that is just a picture, when you're requiring the storage facility, naka-yo, you're requiring now, what image, not how you need a model?
What is the question?
So... So, po may... Sinong, nung binibasen niyo 'yan, 'yan na, o kisigan niyo nung nagbasa niya?
Southings po namin.
Ah... So, wala kayong kitang basehan, na prototype? Or, uh, si nila, si Batu, which is being utilized for the same purpose?
Wala talaga.
Wala?
Uh, based dun lang sa description na binigay po natin.
So, hindi natin nasabi... Uh, your expertise in the construction of the said building will be equal to your expertise as to the reservation of seats or other materials that may include in that building, tama ba?
Tama talaga.
Majority floor. Councilor Latago.
Para sa part sa agriculture, kasi maglola na project, and you're doing those projects, and those priority projects po, eh... Si Burro, past na list ngayon, uh... Sasafor na 'yung mga partners natin because of, si, prices, palay. Sinasabi ng PD, nani, mas noron na 'yung tara, isa 'yung palay. Hindi kayo mas magka, mas maputing gamitin na lang 'yung budget 'yan, subsidizing mga partners natin, isa gamit na lang 'yan, na, I don't think, it's a priority project eh, 'yung magagamit palagi 'yan. Pag wala na 'yung taniman, wala na rin gagamit 'yan. So, si Burro, 'yung, eh, sa agriculture, sana maganapin sa kanila. Sana bigyan nila para magpasapanan nila.
Uh, I was informed, uh, by the Attorney General, na palapit po 'yung ating, uh... Representative for the Agriculture Office, so, kung meron po po tayong engineering concerns, siguro matanong ating the engineer. Sir, tanong po 'yun po 'yung sa ano, sa manggroup, eh.
Yes, sir.
'Yun po, sasalangan namin sa bala.
Opo, opo, ah, 'yun na po 'yung gagawin natin.
Wala naman tayong, siguro, siguro matatamangin lang, kasi, diba, NTIC po naman?
Opo, 'yung...
Pwede na manabi galawin?
Opo.
Eh, 'yung...
Sa akin po 'yung maintenance po talaga.
Ah, sa akin po nga, pwede tahanan, may, may kasama, 'yun.
Hindi, hindi po magamit.
And then, 'yun sa NCDC, ano po 'yung laki nun?
Uh... Sa playground. 120 square meter, 10 by 12, siya. Opo.
Hindi naman na masikat, no?
Ample lang po 'yung space ng, uh, minaximize lang po natin 'yung naghihirang space po 'yan na area natin. Pakiibak na 'yan. So, may available space lang po tayo na, inutilized lang po natin 'yan, kasi kung magapantin niyo, pag-lini po natin, dutarap niyo po 'yung 50 to 55 po na 'yung kinatayungan.
Pwede po magfollow? Forward po, forward. Uh... Ang... Yan, naselect 'yung legislative.
Opo, 'yan, opo.
Ang, ang concern ko lang po kasi, well, oo nga, para sa bata, pero, hindi ba ginawa natin 'yung playground dun sa harap, para rin ng mga bata?
Yes, sir.
Pero, pero naman tayong playground.
Opo, ang corpus po kasi 'yan, hindi naman pwede makihalo 'yung silong four years old sa, 'yung mga matatandana, kasi mabubuli po sila. So, talagang 'yan po 'yung, parang, 'yung talagang re-reward po ng, from national po talaga.
Manggroup the senate office, ang palang po isong galing sa... LDU fund natin, walang subsidy lang na national doon eh. Would you know po? LDU po. Hindi lang po 'yung, siguro concern ko 'yun, kasi may playground tayo sa harap, tapos playground po din.
Parang, parang po lang, sir, for retention, uh... Upgrade education po kasi, may education po tayong kinukuha from, so, report po 'yun sa parameters po natin. Parking area.
Any other...
Opo, may parking area po natin.
Any other questions po po, regarding, uh... The... The items under the 20% Development Fund. Councilor Latago, uh, engineer. Wala na, uh... Councilor Elizondo, last question.
Regarding po na sa instance, to barangays. Ano 'yan? A lot po pala, a lot, a lot of road is to the metal, so... ... in charge of this. Kasi, can I be going to the airport, please?
Yes, Your Honor, as long as he is charged against this specific account, why is he is to be charged against his special education fund? Therefore, but is this, uh... Somehow exclusion?
Good question. Any other questions po, at the Budget Office and our Engineering Office? Last question, Councilor Ciro Villanado.
Ma'am, what are the kinds of projects may be undertaken under the Special Purpose Appropriation Fund, other than this statement?
Under the special appropriation, Your Honor, we have, uh... Field health, we have also the... Person maintenance for public buildings and vehicles, we also have insurance of, uh... Public buildings and vehicles also, and a lot more, also the... Estate warrants, warrants, madam...
That is to be scholarshiped.
Ah, yes, scholarship is also...
Majority floor.
Um, ma'am, uh... Ilan ang... ... in... ... po 'yung... Uh... PD? Family PD? Uh, pay? In five? Ilan, ilan 25 po 'yun? What, acha kayo? 'Yung...
... specifically, their nature, Your Honor, uh... Sorry, kind of, I was able to understand chaos. So, maybe...
Continue as before, assuming, dito, one set na PD is, uh... Ito 'yung ano. Baka, 14 inches? 24 inches?
Compared to pressure, baka 33 inches.
Kasi, at 'yun, hindi po nga, may nakasari, so, at 'yun, nakalayay talaga, kung bilang inches, 32, 43, 43.
Majority floor.
Sabi niya, kanino, ma'am, the situation, the situation, ma'am. The situation na ari, kanino the situation. Yung magti-decide?
I think po sa... Somebody opposite of the chief.
So, tell him magti-decide?
The, 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 for our officers, of the record now, ang nakalangko si Dito, 'yung... May, may moradgumi, uh... Lahat ng infrastructure development, alang ang development fund, kailangan po ng lahat. So, yeah, construction of foreign society, manggroup propagation, with the various field, and then lahat po ng mga requests nago. So, yeah, construction of foreign facility, model propagation, the diverse field, and then lahat po ng mga requests nago. Mga, ah... So, 'yun po, ah, kung wala na po tagal tawag, ah, I think na wala na representante from the agriculture office, ah, naka-UBO office siya. So, any kind of questions for doon sa ating talawang speaker, kasi wala po si agriculture. So, basa sa ito po 'yun na, basa pa lang.
Thank you.
Papalikan na lang po si Councillor Montevera, kung saan doing location. Eh, I'm assuming, do pa po ng City Government po tatayuan. Eh, or barangay, do din po lang. Kasi ang concern ng ano, kasi 500,000, 20 million. Kung wala na manansee, kasi, ah, po may re-referens na parang, 'yung rice tarification doon, 'yung effects na mararamdaman natin ng skill. Wala po tatanas. Kasi mas mahal na nayong, para. So, yeah, po, ah, thank you very much, ah, any more, eh, ma'am, David. Thank you. Thanks na kay Ma'am, Lucy, doon po 'yung. So, what is the pleasure of the party regarding item number one, under proposed solutions? Councillor Renoy?
Ah, we just make five, ah, we don't know.
Thank you. Please move by Councillor Siri Renoy, any second. Second by Councillor Montevera, Councillor Renoy, Councillor Abad, that we include item number one under proposed solutions in our business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? Councillor, Councillor.
Certain objection, but not a litigation, because, ah, one question was left, ah, unanswered, the value of construction of the Councillor. Our responsibility is to build structure in the framework for that of the government of the paradise, but, ah, otherwise, ah, we can say construct of the private that, ah, I know your housing plan to be spent, so, private. Yes, ah, with that, ah, negotiation.
There. So, either we defer it now, or we include in our business of the day and defer later, if we find that, ah, there are some other details to, to, ah, ah, completion.
We, I am not facing objection, ah, we, we can have a, to be, to abandon ata, but, eh, the convenience, the, eh, eh, ayam, ayam, or, eh, response, eh, after the service department, eh, that, ah, is a part of the, eh, the, eh, okay.
So, okay, my take, ah, so there is a credit motion, any second to that. Motion, Councillor Siri Renoy, to include item, to include item, our business of the day for deliberation. Second by Councillor Seeson, any objection? Given that the said item is included in our business of the day for deliberation, then let's take for a concrete, the details that, ah, were satisfied by our, ah, research speakers. Oh, thank you very much, thank you. Okay. Regarding, ah, item number two, ako na lang explain, sir. This is similar to what we asked the resolution a few weeks ago, regarding the naming of equipment and furniture of our local city's resolution, the barangay, such as 'yung mga items po na dinibigay natin. Dito po si Sango Nian, ngayon din po tayong or dinibigay, example po 'yun sa live room, nagbibigay po siya ng bookshelves, dinibigay siya ng books. And then, lahat po ng items na nagagaling sa point of legislative, na tinutunay po natin, ay kailangan balik po natin ng disclamation. So, humihirin po ako ng authority para po, 'yung lahat po ng nakacharge dito, ay ma-in不明白 natin ang maayos, at hindi na, ako makakabulit natin. So... Thank you, guys.
Yeah, as far as not, ah, may exposure, you have, is, eh, the
Just move by Councillor Siri Renoy, to the second by Councillor Abad, G. Batay, Councillor Seeson, Councillor Seganera. They, they na nga barangay president, we would not know that we, to, item number two, under proposed resolution, in our business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? Given that the said, item is included in our business of the day. One second, David.
Under communications received, we have for review, review of documents for CSO accreditation.
Yeah, can you expand, one second, David?
Dito po 'yung, mag-schedule po na kanibang committee hearing, para po sa naki tirang 22, CSO's 90 pa po dumadaan sa committee hearing, mga, mga, mga accreditation documents.
May Councillor, Councillor Renoy, the chairman on corporate.
There are, you can see, ah, committee hearings on, 5, 6, block.
The chairman on, ah, corporate, moves to schedule a committee hearing on September 5, May 11 morning, for the additional application of the other CSO's, writing under, any second. Second by Councillor Gaby Delian, and Councillor Seganera, any objection? Given that the said, CSO accreditation hearing is set on September 9, 9. Pag i-ano na po, sabihan 'yung mga kaibigan nating, CSO, ang gusto nila mag-approve, approve, baka last na 'yun, ah, last na din 'yun sa'yo na. Para makapasa sila sa special bargain. One second, David.
I would eat to the committee report. The first item is the joint committee report from the legislative and committee health of the over 20, regarding the issue concerning disbursement of SK fund.
Councillor, ah, go by higher Councillor, wait, wait.
I would just committee report, ah, doing committee, when you are barangay, ah, ah, is a thing for the dispute of the SK fund. Ah, committee hearing was conducted, ah, on August 29, 2019, which is presentation, the city was to deliver the, ah, Oscar, or, ah, the day, since I present that, eh, card, the, ah, accounting, the, eh, the, uh, and then, but, the, percent, committee, ah, we, ah, granted, ah, the
... It's saving for two windows. Part of it related by the G M C number one is a financial independent. After moving on it, it's something that the bataan. Sixteen part of the responsibility and the community. The decision and disposment of escape and risk about the ski official. Then the leaders should therefore ensure that the bank are utilized rightly in a proper way of recovery of the day. Outting and putting in course and regulation and that's it but cannot be used for the payment of personal services. The need for the speed to review the escape is indispensable for maintaining the above vision singular. Below the part of the speed to complete the review within the prescribed period shall bring the the annual skeletal budget approved. This committee has also required on how to ask for the escape program. A moving to the land back at it, there is added to open an account under the of Skiderman and Resuret and Skip Resuret and be the support for the the recognition view the foregoing the committee moves that after moving the report and that a posting subject be deleted from that and the
Can I have your comment? Counselor Siri, please.
The uh, the the last paragraph of the report. State that the need for the speed to review the escape path is special for the management of the the below the part of the speed to complete the review within the prescribed period shall be the the government by the speed. If uh, who knows that the budget of the escape is given to the the Parangay. And uh, I would mandate to review uh, the uh, actions of the Parangay is only coordination and security for this K budget. It's not a coordination. I have a review of this K budget because it's not a coordination.
You project the state as a other Parangay, at what budget on Parangay?
So if we review the Parangay budget, where in the escape path is uh, already included? Does it uh, it not come up with you in the K budget? Or there will be a spite review?
Uh, Madam Siri, can you? For the information?
For the information for everybody. During the committee meeting regarding disbursement of funds, I was able to propose um, express these questions to the acting my first persons. And they provided me with G M C number one. Uh, joint, my own, the Rakan Circle, from the Department of Budget and Management and D I F, regarding the disbursement of funds. And if I'm not mistaken, as a section. There's another part of the section of the G M C. Now, I could do that the Sanggoyan Panluso is mandated by that circular to conduct the review of the S K budgets per Parangay and they are given as a period of uh, one month without action from the Sanggoyan that is given. I've already provided a copy of the G M C to the Office of Our there.
Yeah, I feel uh, we should
Sir, can I have one?
The mandate, the mandate of the speed to review of the the escape of those of the Parangay is contained in the government's court, which is law. And now, G M C is not the law. It is must be, it has to review the budget of the Parangay. And the G M C, they meant the government's court.
Okay. Chair, who's going to? What about the Parangay? Escape?
Yes. That's what I'm saying. I thought in, I think I got one. That's a, that's a, that's a that's a that's a uh, no. That's what I'm saying. Uh, you know, that's what I'm saying. And it's what I'm saying. But it's not a
Madam Parangay.
The Parangay paray, what I'm saying.
If we just interpret uh, both legate and some, really uh, sample, escape and the middle, it'll make one of them. Uh, really, the Parangay, the Parangay, uh, five hundred thousand, uh, Comorario, three hundred thousand, uh, Special Project, two hundred thousand, uh, food, 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 and you, Parangay is not satisfied with the requirements of the G M C, so that's the if you don't want to know, man, uh, I'm I'm supervise my the, yeah, the S K budget, may supraga, I think I got it, so the look. So we now, we should make sure. So let's take out, we'll uh, take out, Madam Siri, take out the suggestion and the comment of Counselor Siri. So Counselor Obakai hopes to to adopt the said committee report and the said matter be deleted in our agenda. And uh, we hope that Marisol, not in problem, and Abra, my S K. And we thank you for all that participatory this matter. This was moved by Counselor Obakai and second, seconded by Counselor Susan. But the adoption of this committee report and the said matter be deleted in our agenda. An objection, giving none. The said committee report is simply adopted and the said item is deleted from our agenda. Next, I beg.
Joint Committee Report from the hearing held on August twenty third regarding the proposed ordinance updating and or creating the Aravino City Technical Vocational Institution and Assessment Center and Providing Funds thereof.
Counselor Pauline Jivapay, the telecom sir that uh, here.
The S K uh, on the ten minutes of the morning for the whole picture is that of ordinance, the 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 condition of this uh, this center and the Providing Funds thereof for the management and management of the the commission. President, President, Robo, Boy, and also in the dance for the for the and for this Doctor Gueyado has discussed the funding, management, and staff related by the establishment of the according to this initiative extent. The party is embracing digital education institutions with successful in the She added that she got the note that the about the staff, she initially presented better about the establishment of the like Doctor Gueyado presented three young mechanics, who still said this should be the initial courses to the current program, the National Community L C one and the Southern National Community C two. This course is required to have as clean and very easy to demonstrate respect to other courses that are shared and be funded and here would be African for future progress function which requires perhaps to make a one point five as for funding this staff with the by discovered trends, things like for that the back L C U enjoys for experience as famous and part of the program of this staff, which shares its with the We deal the above specified means and committee moves for the adoption of this committee report and paper for one week for the preparation of the initial draft of this
We, uh, committee general education hopes to for adoption of the committee report if the said item be deferred in our next regular session. Uh, we think the initial draft of uh, the said national, the said ordinance, so under unfinished business, this is and the second point, seconded by Counselor Illinois, Counselor Segovera, any objection? We remind the said committee report is hereby adopted, the said item be deferred for a week and be calendar under unfinished business in our next regular session, pending the first draft of the said ordinance. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the hearing held on August twenty third regarding the resolution to verbally endorsing application of council and corporation for forest land agreement for the reason purpose.
Counselor
The committee hearing was conducted on the hearing must decide the way of the permanent Polonya Bahay, Oscar Boy, Tato, Nisa, Tiso, and also President Corporation Engineering for the planning and for the upset of the hearing as taking consideration on the on E N R for support the rules of legislation governing the special uses of your it referring that there are documents which are not drawn by the opponent and must be reconciled and considered in the the committee hearing is required pending consideration of the refusal of the E N R of the two thousand four as well as and so much is here by the September twenty second in view of the finding obviously that and reset another hearing September twenty seven, twenty nineteen, and
Counselor Alfred Palesigas hopes for the adoption of the committee report if the said issue be, be set, be set for another hearing on September twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, then eight, ten o'clock in the morning. Any second, seconded by Counselor Rabado, Counselor Illinois, and Counselor Susan. Any objection? Giving none, the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said item is scheduled for another hearing September twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, seven o'clock in the morning. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the hearing held on August twenty third regarding the ordinance amending the proposed amendment of ordinance number two thousand five plus twenty two, otherwise known as the Conferential Transportation Traffic Ordinance of the City of Alagin.
Counselor Bahay, sir.
Committee Report for Transportation. Uh, ordinance amending sixty eleven, of see the ordinance number two thousand five plus twenty two, otherwise known as the twenty six car of Alagin moving finding a single round committee hearing, beginning to afterwards conducted on August seventeen, two thousand nineteen. With me, we're to in of Rabado, of of Bahay, of 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 season together from the zoning market, C B D C, also and the San Diego, Alagin City Police Force, aided by Arville, Ciberpolo, that is due by summer in some is due to article eleven, sixty one, reparking within C B D, C B D batteries, lower traffic condition in the city. Since Sir Nowry has vehicles are not be allowed to park in city streets to within the central business district, it's fully significant and C B D C, in general, the proposed that the city will identify the primary roads and secondary road within C B D. And considering the present situation of the city, the number of vehicles paying the street at C B D, if other individuals, the city may identify secondary road which are not frequently used, allow on street parking. This right the entity that identify process proposed are C three and the he also emphasized that the city of straightly limiting requirement building, five meters three meters two meters this valley is to the committee to revisit also another relevant video, ordinance number two thousand three plus twenty three rate and ordinance prohibiting any use the street. I mean, yes, head Ali, public open space and the like for private use, providing penalty for their and for the other purposes. Then, system is supported by penalties for traffic violation was since the one, the concern is C B D discussing the present accent of parking areas. One condition was for the city to the possibility to enter into agreement with private property for establishment of the temporary home development. As as property the presentation also expressed by the to ease the traffic condition in and that for passes, many passes, as their for vehicle speed and after the road and the bypass road, those with existing criminal within C B D may allow greater but must comply with the point to point scheme. In line with this purpose, the committee request the motion to check the traffic scheme for the coming up here, the committee decided twenty two minutes to the seventy minute, a try run for this purpose, they can done as soon as possible. The condition, in view of the above statement, the committee hereby moves for the adoption of this committee report and that consultation with the affected transportation law be scheduled on
So, we, ano, ngayon, after, before we set the consultation, we again, ngayon, the draft amended ordinance. Supraga, meron tayong bagong proposal, sa kanan, ang Siri, also. Kasi wala na tayo. Okay, sir, sorry. Si Okay, uh, at five, five. Let's go, huh? Okay, so Counselor, uh, Obakay, who's for the adoption of the committee report? And uh, other, and also, the committee hearing would be set on September eleventh, ten o'clock in the morning with uh, affected transport troops that uh, would be affected by this rehouting scheme that we are proposing. But with regard to the main ordinance, uh, we will still furnish, we will still uh, continually, continually amending and fixing the final copy upon uh, uh, given this all the results. Any second? Second, any second point, seconded by Counselor Segovera, Counselor Susan, Counselor Illinois. Any objection? Giving none, the said committee, hearing is set on September eleventh, seven o'clock in the morning. Madam Siri, tayong, I'd be invite also the representative from the executive department, kasi I believe that consultation na si so, paka magoble yung, para least, uh, updated tayo, on eh, sabi ng mga kasi I, I believe that consult na sila yung mga and the Next, order.
Joint Committee Report from the hearing held August twenty is regarding the evaluation of C S O documents for accreditation.
Counselor Paulina, say
The combined so demanded or rejected, uh, twenty one and the people C I C in numbers in Another committee hearing was conducted on August seventeenth, of evaluate the documents submitted by C applicants after after uh, the videos would be documents submitted and some representation on the data obtained in the documents. This committee found that the even is to applicants fully compliant with all the requirements for accreditation to the of representations in the local bodies. No organizations of function is compliant to the requirements set with this reason. And two organizations was not fully represented during the hearing. With number one, plan uh, presentation of Parangay, of Bahran, both resources position, B, the overall economic C, public organization organizations for C, basic balance of E, minus division F for this one movement of E, the region of the of party that it's a lot in Philippine Filipino and the fourth E, minus is rated for E, paradise condition. Oh, uh, financially compliant condition, E, the sum for B, the so in eastern direction, E, so the applicants not only to visit and start to the body the respective purpose of substantial matters regarding the view of the present committee move for the adoption of this uh, committee report. And that uh, resolution, affecting the event is fully compliant with the mandatory requirements and condition of two organizations was substantially compliant be included to the end of the day of the region This committee ordered to, but the two organizations were not represented for the review hearing. We will define again for the next hearing September five, twenty nineteen, on ten o'clock in the
So before we approve, adopt, uh, a resolution for the eleven C S Os, let us in recognizing the two organizations. That a resolution operating the eleven C S Os which will be fully compliant with after we recognize it. Do we have to exclude the two organizations? Why? Yeah.
Si kasi po the Nera, the from the regarding accreditation, the provisions po if the C S O complied with, with all the requirements except registration, the Sanggoyan Panluso may recognize this C S O para members special but we cannot issue a certificate of accreditation on the because of the absence of registration of the organization for a hearing, but authorized by the registered suborganization.
This is to be part of discussion, right? So there's a motion by Counselor Obakay that we either resolution, accredit, accredit the eleven C S Os which fully complied with the substantial, recognizing the two organizations which substantially comply be included in our regulation. Any second, seconded by Counselor Susan, Counselor Segovera, Counselor Obakay, any objection? Giving none, the said committee report is hereby adopted and the said item, said resolution be included in our this regulation. And further, another committee hearing is set on September five, two thousand nineteen, nine o'clock in the morning for the next accreditation hearing for our next touch of C S Os. Next.
Joint Committee Report from the hearing held August twenty ninth regarding ordinance, proposed ordinance prohibiting the selling of junk foods and relating the sale of sugar drinks to preparatory, elementary, and high school students inside and within one hundred meter perimeter in public and private schools in Alagin City and providing penalties for violations thereof.